Board members, please come to your seats, please. Michael Beekler. It's Michael Beekler's in the room.
Can I do a drop mic?
Oh, I missed you.
Oh, yeah.
I've been standing tall and saying. Hey, Lionel. Lionel.
Hey, board members, please come to the front.
Eight, we got eight.
Okay, everybody, everybody, I'm going to ask you to please sign in, take your seats. We're about ready to start. Okay, everybody, please take your seats. Thank you, the meeting is now called to order, thank you very much. Okay, do we have any declarations of conflicts with any board members tonight? Anything on the agenda? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, first up, we have the Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Nick Yohori, Captain, Waialua Fire Station. The statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the Fire Response Map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. There is no information previously requested. Incident statistics for April 25. Fires, we had one structure. Wildland brush, one. Nuisance, one. Cooking, zero. Activated alarms, four, with no fire. Emergencies, medical, fifty-two. Motor vehicle crashes, six. Mountain rescues, one. Ocean rescues, two. Hazardous materials incidents, zero. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. Fire safety tips and announcements. May 2025 safety tips, home fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers serve as the first line of defense against fires and often extinguish the fire before the fire department arrives. For more information, visit homefiresprinkler.org. Fire spreads quickly, a fire can turn deadly in under two minutes. Synthetic materials burn quickly and release deadly poisonous smoke. High-risk individuals in home fires include small children, elderly adults, those with disabilities, and pets. Fire sprinklers protect your home and family and activate automatically to control the fire, thereby giving everyone a chance to escape. The best protection is having working home, smoke alarms, fire sprinklers, and a practice fire escape plan. Information about Honolulu's ordinance relating to fire safety is available at fire.honolulu.gov. Thank you, anyone questions?
Okay, any questions, board members? Bob?
With regard to batteries and the lithium batteries. Have we had any incidents on the North Shore besides where the wind turbines are? Where batteries have gotten, caused fires? And if lithium batteries at homes were to catch a fire or cause a fire? Is there anything special that should be done to put them out? For instance, perhaps there's things we shouldn't do?
Yeah, that's a good question. As far as official like statistics and stuff, I'll try to, I'll try to look that up. I don't believe there are any in this last month related to any batteries, like lithium ion batteries or whatnot. I'll double check though and get back to you guys on that one. As far as, you know, being safe, it just, you know, unplug it once it's fully charged. Don't leave it unsupervised, stuff like that, right? If it's a larger thing, you can, you can charge them outside, would probably be safer. But definitely just keep it supervised, don't, don't leave it charging overnight, stuff like that. But as far as to, the last part of your question, I believe was as far as putting it out, is there any special tactics or anything? Same thing like any other fire, the best course of action is prior to evacuate, everyone stay a safe distance and call 911. And let us get there and handle it. Because even, even for us, those battery, those fires take a tremendous amount of water for, for extinguishing. So it's definitely just stick the plan with evacuating 911 and stuff like that. But I'll get back to you on the, the first part of the question.
Thank you, community, any questions for HFD? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight, sir, we appreciate it. Next up, next up, we have Scott Viera from HPD.
Good evening, everyone, yes, I am Scott Viera, the Night Watch Lieutenant for the Waialua Station, which covers the North Shore, Milalani, and Waialua. I'll go ahead with the stats. There were five assaults. Zero robberies, there was one burglary. Three unauthorized entry into motor vehicles or thefts from your vehicle. And there were thirty-four motor vehicle collisions. Citations, there was one criminal citation issued. There was hundred and twenty-two parking citations and two-hundred-and-eighty-six traffic violations or miscellaneous crime offenses. The total calls for service was eight-hundred-and-thirty. And I'll go ahead right into the tip, which has to do, a safety tip has to do with calls for service, you know. A lot of times when I'm talking with people, friends, family, they always tell me about an incident. And they said, oh, yeah, I didn't want to call because you guys are busy or. So, you know, whenever in doubt, I ask you guys to please call. That being said, I know sometimes when you guys do call, there's a long wait. The officers take long to call. Part of their reason is the calls are prioritized. So if it's something that's urgent, let them know, we need officers now and they'll prioritize it. But if it's something like a parking car or some, a parked car that's been there for a while, or something that might not be so urgent. You can let the dispatcher know, and like I said, they'll put it probably at the bottom of the list. Another thing you can do is go to honolupd.org and they have online reporting. I just checked it out, it's up and running, kind of easy, so if you're ever wondering if shall I report it? I asked it, you guys, just go ahead and report it, we'd rather know about something that we already know about or someone else reported than not know about it. That's all I got, thank you.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it, okay, Mike Beekler and then Bob and then Leaf.
I just had a question, it's about a property that's come up here before, it's the one next to 7-Eleven across from the Boat Harbor. And I know there was a raid there again recently. My office is immediately adjacent to it, so I'm keenly aware. And the air conditioners are back on in the game room, so I assume the game room is back in operation. I just wanted to know if that has been referred to the prosecutor's office to pursue via like asset forfeiture, foreclosure thing?
It, it has, and that's been in the works for, I want to say over a year now, the, letting the property managers know. I know some of the family was on the mainland. And as, I don't want to give you wrong information, but there was a move to forfeit the property. It takes a while, but that's in the works, I don't want to give you wrong information, but yeah, and I, I know it's a nuisance. If you guys see things, again, just call and we'll, we'll do what we can. A lot of times that's referred to our Narcotics Vice Division and they got to find ways to, to get into the house.
Mike, Jay Mueller, who works with you guys, he's actually working on it, do you know him? Okay, call me and I'll give you his number and he'll be able to help you with some information. Thank you, Scott, appreciate that, go ahead, Bob.
So I noticed a car that's been on the side of the road for a long time. And I asked a police officer, you know, if he knew about it or could check on or whatever. And he asked me a really interesting question, he said, were there a lot of black flies on the window? What do you think you meant?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, but, well, did he, did he check the car out, I mean, was it?
I don't know, we were in a different part of the North Shore, but the car was in, you know, I told him where it was, you knew where the car was.
On private property or on city?
Well, it was just, actually, it was right where you turn down to. When you're turning into Haleiwa, you can turn down to Puana Point. It was parked right next to the concrete bunker looking thing right there. It's kind of was a dark car. But I thought the reference to the flies was interesting.
I don't know there's an answer for that one, but thank you, Bob. Leaf, go ahead.
What is the difference between a burglary and a robbery?
Okay, so burglary has to do with a structure. Like a home can get burglarized, a store, a storage, it has to do with a structure. Someone unlawfully entering and committing a crime within, whether it's entering your house to assault you or take something. A robbery has to do with a person. So a lot of time people say, oh, my house got robbed, your house can't get robbed, your house can get burglarized, people get robbed. And robbery is theft with force.
The question I was going to ask is, how can I find out the difference between a commercial vehicle and a? Whatever, because. I want to know the, is there a weight limit or is there, how the thing looks or whatever, because how can I find that out?
Okay, so typically, vehicles on the license plate will have the numbers before the letters, right? But in recent, I know there's been some changes because there's so many different kinds of vehicles where they're used as both. Certain vehicles over a certain weight are supposed to have the VGW on the side. I don't know if there's a specific vehicle you're talking about, but if you have one in mind and it's, if it might be doing something you think illegal or. I would just advise you to call and we can run, once we run the plate, we can tell for sure, because it'll come out to either a business or a private citizen.
Yeah, and the plate part. I just changed a pickup truck to a flatbed.
Okay.
The weight changed by fifty pounds. It's still only four thousand pounds. And they're, they're, they're telling me it's a commercial vehicle.
That's, who's telling, is that DMV?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Kelly.
Wrong person. Community, any questions for HPD? Yes, Lionel, please come to the front.
Officer Viera, it was listed in the advertiser of the bills that passed and one of them was. Sixteen, it says here that would make it illegal to ride a moped without a helmet. And prohibit anyone under the age of sixteen. From driving a moped, so what does enforcement of that nature would look like? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I, I know there was some recent updates and it's listed on the honolupd.org. It's the first page on the bottom tab, there's a. Tab referring to e-bikes, bikes, and mopeds. I don't know specifically, it's, I know, I thought it was actually you have to be, anything under eighteen, you have to have a helmet. But as far as riding a moped under eighteen, I, I need to check, I gotta get, I don't want to give you wrong information.
Yes, well, it is published here that it would, it would be illegal to ride a moped without a helmet and prohibit anyone under the age of sixteen.
Okay, age of sixteen, yeah.
Driving a moped.
Right.
You know, we got choke kids, residents and visitors alike, they don't follow any rules.
Oh, yeah, motorcycles, motorcycles, like I said. If you see them, and I know it's kind of frustrating, frustrating at times, but if you see people riding a moped and you think they're under the age of sixteen, give us a call. We'll, we'll check it out and citations are warranted, we'll cite the operator.
Thank you, Lionel. Thank you, Scott, we really appreciate you coming tonight. Aloha.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening, guys.
Okay, next up, we have Victor from Ho'ona'lu Ocean Safety, thanks, Victor.
Thank you. My first time here, anyways, I'm the captain for the North Shore lifeguards. Been working for about thirty years and ten as a captain, ten as a captain, thirty years as a lifeguard. I have the incidents for April 2025. We have a total of thirty-seven incidents on the North Shore. Anything related to rescue, which is swimming, surf, diving. We have about, we had fourteen. Preventive assist and rescues is when we help someone to get out of the water or we respond to, twelve. Park maintenance calls, about two, that's when we have showers running or, you know, broke, something's broken, toilet's broken or anything else, we call parks and have them come over. Medical and other trauma, about nine. One shark sighting at backyards. One CPR as Sunset Beach Mothers. And theft, need a police assist, we have about five. The total of our attendance for April was two-hundred-and-fifty-three, sixty-seven thousand. Rescues, about twenty-one, resuscitations, one, CPR. And surf accident, one, drownings, one. Assistance, six. And police assistance, one. That's it.
Thank you very much, Victor. Okay, Mike?
Thanks for the stats, I just had a question about the number, I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty-three, those are visitors or guests?
Everyone that we can see on the beach and the water, yeah.
Oh, that's an estimate.
Yeah, that's the main number, residents, tourists, everybody comes to the beach and everybody's there, including in the water.
Cool.
And we count the parking lot too, because we respond to the parking lot. And sometimes we respond to Cam Highway with car crashes and all kinds of stuff.
Is that like you guys' estimate or does someone else do that?
That's what we count, that's what we see.
Wow, cool.
So each tower reports that every day.
Great, thank you.
Now, Bob, behave yourself, I promised Victor you'd be fine.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
You know, from time to time, people die. And, and it's always nice to know how they died, so that maybe we could learn from that. Someday, could you come in, one of these meetings, say, over the last twenty years, you know, twenty people have died and this is where they died and this is how they died? And make it an educational presentation, because I talk to people all the time and they go, oh, well, is it safe out there? Well, there was a guy who died there and there was a guy died there and a guy, and they go, whoa! But they die for different reasons and it would be really educational if you could do that in hollow.
Thank you.
Victor, is that something, and I don't mean to, Bob, I'm not sure that that's something ocean safety could do or that may have to come from the medical examiner, perhaps?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. No, 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 I know this, I know this. No, 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 that, no, 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 that's not true, that's not true. No, 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 if you want to know that the best information is get it from the medical examiner, so let me do this, you didn't let me finish. I will work with Kurt and Adam and see what we can do to come with some information. But it may take more than just the ocean safety guys, that's what I was trying to say before you interrupted me. Okay, Denise and then Debbie.
Victor, great to see you, thank you for coming. Can you, so summer's here, right? And the numbers are just going to keep going up, can you give us a little bit of insight in terms of your staffing plans for the summer district wide? And maybe re-describe for everybody how large the district is and kind of towers, so just kind of.
Oh, sure.
And, and also anything the community do, can do to help in any way, I mean, now's a good time to make your, your plea.
To begin with, just be straightforward with you guys, when you guys see something going on in the water. 911 is the best thing you guys can do and ask for lifeguards or fire, right? Because the, this, our dispatch is going to get connected with 911 call and then they can call us on the radio and we can respond. Our district goes from Kaina Point. All the way to Heia Boat Ramp, I think District Three is the largest one, right? Places like Ko'aloa, for us, it's, it takes us about twenty minutes or twenty-five, depending traffic, to respond to an incident at Chinaman's Hat. We've been fortunate to have during the summers, summers, pretty much all the summers, it's starting, actually started summer schedule, we just started this past Sunday. Goes all the way to the next holiday by September, right? And we have what we call another rescue. We have two operators, one jet skiing there and we have two or three guys at Ko'aloa Tower. So they actually take care of that, all the calls that comes to that area, right? During the summer, we try to have three jet skis. So there's one jet ski, you guys are going to see around Haleiwa that responds all the way to Kaina Point. And all the way about Waimea or Pipeline, and there's another scheme between Waimea all the way to Kahuku, Ha'ula. And possibly Chinaman's Hat, if they have to correspond. We have about sixty-five, sixty-five lifeguards on the North Shore, five lieutenants. Anything else? That's about it. I just want to let you guys know, I think you guys have seen a lifeguard truck at. Three Table, Shar's Cove. Yeah. That was actually my first position as employee here on the North Shore, I used to patrol the area, little pickup truck, a Ford pickup truck back in the days. And we see the need to have that, so that's why you guys see a lifeguard there all the time.
Debbie? Hey, this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
Go ahead, Deb.
Did the CPR person pull through?
Yes.
Good, good job.
Good job, guys.
Any final questions for the community? Okay, thank you, Victor, it's a pleasure meeting you, thank you for coming tonight. Border Water Supply, that's me. We had two main breaks in the month of April, we had one at 67643 Kahui Street in Waialua, it was an eight-inch pipe. And then we had a second eight-inch pipe on 67-321 Farrington Highway, I think that might have been near you, Mike. And just a reminder that summer water conservation tips, we want you to conserve water, we're coming into the hot time of our season. And we did not have a very rainy winter, as everyone is aware. We only had really one good month and so it's going to be even more critical for us to be very mindful of our water use. So only use what you need, please do not waste it, and we have lots of good tips on our website. And if you have any questions, I'm here to take them, any questions in the board? Community, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, before we get into residents' concerns, really quickly, there's a couple of things, and I'm going to try something new tonight, board members. In the past, board members used to be able to bring up stuff under residents' concerns. But I, what I respectfully ask is that you keep it to things like announcements or stuff, you know, we have our council rep here tonight, we have Dr. Fox here, we have Senator Oahu here. So if you have questions specifically for them, just save that for their section. But if there's anything else, we're just going to open the floor, so to speak. But one thing I did want to mention is, there may have been some information out there saying that some folks from the. How do I put this politely? The people who think that it's okay to build on the mountain, I'm not going to leave it at that. No, they're not here tonight, but we are holding a community meeting that is being co-hosted by the Waialua Hawaiian Civic Club. And Keep the North Shore Country, it will be next Tuesday night, June third, at Waialua High School at 6:00 PM. And I did send out emails to our elected officials as well. So next Tuesday night, Waialua High School at 6:00 PM, we have invited the people who think it's okay to build on the mountain. And DPP, I don't think, the people who think it's okay to build on the mountain are coming. But we do hope the DPP will attend and we do hope our elected officials can attend as well. So I just wanted to put that out there, just in case anyone was thinking they were here tonight, so. Okay, let's start with residents first and then I'll come to board members, okay? Thank you, any residents, Michelle, did you want to go first? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Michelle Casemaro, Student Activities Coordinator for Waialua High and Intermediate School. So if you didn't know, we had our beautiful outdoor graduation this past Saturday. Graduates will be picking up their diplomas tomorrow from school. This is our last full week of school with Friday being an intervention day. Teachers and students are thrilled. Maybe parents not so much, anyway. Preparations will begin soon for next year already and first event for our year will be our kickstart set for. To occur on July 29th, that's when parents come and get, the kids get, you know, schedules and computers and all that kind of stuff. But there'll be more meetings prior to us getting to that point. And that's it.
Thanks, Michelle, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to say, this is the woman that helped with a team of people put on the graduation and it was absolutely gorgeous. It was beautiful, it was truly a beautiful moment, yes.
So even seven hundred graduates, yeah. So I think that's the attraction, you know, or to our graduation, having less students makes it shorter, so, you know, yeah.
But the biggest brag, our students, a hundred students, more than fifty percent had some kind of cum laude after their name. Thirteen valedictorians and over two million dollars of scholarships. That's pretty impressive for a rinky-dink school in the country, the people, okay? So just remember that when people say things about our country high school, so great job, Michelle.
Thank you.
Wonderful, and then Raquel, if you know, is our student council, community council president. So, thank you, Michelle, go ahead, Karen.
Hello, I want to keep you guys informed on what we're doing with the North Shore Transportation Alternatives. We're got big plans to transform this community into something beautiful without traffic jams and so you can wish us luck. But that's going to take about six years with the city and county, because, so in the meantime. This is one of the projects that we're encouraging the state to do is while they're repaving their way down the Kamimia Highway. When they get to the Chuns Reef area, there's severe drop-offs and some cars pulling off the highway have to come to almost a stop or a complete stop and then coming back on. It really exacerbates the whole traffic situation, so I'm just going to read this letter real quickly that our board wrote to Director Sniffen. "We would like to bring your attention to a safety hazard within the state's right-of-way, specifically the Malka Shire of Kamimia Highway at Chuns and Jaco's reefs. Several sharp drop-offs between the road surface and dirt area used for parking adversely affect traffic and parking movements. Cars move slowly along the highway in search of safe turnout, often blocking traffic with hesitant movements and drivers have difficulty re-entering the road over the high transition. The shoulder transition needs to be evened out. North Shore Transportation Alternatives is a community-based organization dedicated to alleviating traffic and parking congestion on Oahu's North Shore to alternative transportation options. We ask that repairs might be performed at the earliest opportunity. On that note, if anybody has suggestions on other things that they think might help alleviate traffic in the short term or even on our long term. You can find me or our amazing board or you can email instaohahu@gmail.com."
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Good job. Any other residents' concerns and then we'll move to the board? Thanks, Kathleen, come on, Kathleen.
Aloha, my name is Kathleen Els and I'm the Executive Director for the Waialua Arts Festival. First of all, I wanted to thank the community that came out to the fundraiser, May 21st, our Progressive Dinner. The Waialua Arts Festival is scheduled for June 21st and 22nd. Along with some other big events, the Kanu Regatta and the Hanapaa. So the transportation thing is big, 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 big. I went to the transportation meetings and of course, we can expect to alleviate. Traffic problems overnight, but this is something that the North Shore has really needed for a long time. I mean, we kind of did it for. I mean, we kinda did it for the eddy, just getting the community informed and involved as to, you know, carpool, extra buses, things like that. We didn't find out until late in the game, like late April, early May, that the city and county had issued permits to two big events. That usually doesn't happen. So we are doing our best to work together. We're working with the canoe clubs. We are going to do some extra park and rides, per se, in shuttles from, I believe, Kayaka Park, and we're trying to get Alii as well. So we'll keep the, the public informed as we get down to the, you know, details. But just, those are things that the Haleeva needs to really be involved in and get everybody's help at going to things like the transportation committees that we're trying to form. We went to the bus companies. We went to Matt Weyer's office. And obviously, those things are all gonna help. But when you find out things a couple months in advance, you do the best you can.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Yeah, I think Raquel had a quick comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can connect again later.
Sure.
The hanapaa, just for the record, does not have any activity during the day hours.
Correct.
Fishermen are out fishing, so nothing happens until the late evening. But keep in mind that it's a state area. So if anyone plans, like, they tow our cars if we don't have a parking pass. So it would be wise to let those guys know not to-
Correct. Yeah, and the hanapaa hasn't been brought. We've always worked together there. And I know that's a state. It's the, you know, it's the big canoe regatta. It's huge. And we're, we're working together. Everybody wants the same things, safe. And, you know, we want people to be able to get to the events. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Bob, real quick.
Yes.
Yeah, I've got plenty of them that I can leave with you.
My daughter volunteers most years to paint faces. She wants to paint this year, but she doesn't know who to contact. Do you have a phone number?
We, we are actually, yeah, that's haleevartfestival.org or six-eight oh eight six three seven.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
It's on our website, haleevartfestival.org, eight oh eight six three seven two two seven seven.
Awesome.
Mahalo, Kathleen. Great to see you. Before I forget, Board Member Achu reminded me that next Tuesday's meeting is in the high school cafeteria. So she just wanted me to make sure that you guys knew that. So thank you. And we do have a flyer. If anyone wants a copy of the flyer, come in me after the meeting, and I'll give you my card. And you can email me. Okay, I think we had some announcements here. Do we have some? Okay, Cheryl, please go ahead.
I wanted to ask everybody to reserve Saturday, June 28th. And everybody is invited. The Waialua Historical Society is putting on a health fair. And it's gonna be held at our office, which is at the former Waialua Sugar Company building, which is in the back behind the elementary school, six-seven-two-zero-two Kupahu Street. And it's gonna be from ten in the morning to two o'clock. We're featuring four speakers, and a lot of these speakers are Waialua Haleeva residents. For example, Dr. Nash Witton's gonna be talking about healthy aging through preventative care. Ken Martin, who you know from the Waialua Bandstand, he's gonna be talking about medical care powers of attorney and other advanced care directives. At twelve o'clock, Roger Hee will be talking about the truth about long-term care and why it's the most critical decision you need ever made. And then at one o'clock, we have Dr. Vanessa Exalta Rosenbusch and Dr. Summer Teruya from Queens Haleeva. They're gonna be talking about fall and risks presentation. And along with that, we're, we're having Dr. Elmer Baisa, another Waialua High School graduate. He's gonna be doing blood pressure checks and perform random blood sugar screenings and answer questions. And we also have two retired nurses who are Waialua High School graduates who's gonna be talking to you about blood. They have a display about sugar content in the food we all like to eat. It is June 28th, the last day of June from ten to two. And it's, so you go to, take that side street in the back of the post office and take a left at the end. We're also gonna have activities for the kids, making coconut balls and-
Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, and another thing, we're gonna have food truck.
Okay, thank you. There will be food. Okay, Lynell, why don't you take us home? Because we need to keep moving on here. Thank you.
Okay, so like the elephant in the room, everyone's been watching what's been going on with the military leases. And as you know, they do expire in 2029. And the most recent news about that is that the military is going to give back Makua, right? They're going to give up the land. And of course now, and of course, you know about Pohakuloa. And then now what's coming up on June 27th with BLNR will be the leases for Kahuku, ATA One. Just so that you guys know, to keep an open mind about this, right? We all understand the benefits of having the military here for over eighty years. And we also know the downsides, right? All the mistrust that has developed after eighty years. So on June 27th, I'd like to invite you all to come and share your manao, whether to reject or to accept the FEIS. Now, I, I live at the Kanala Aupua, which is adjacent to Wailei. The KTA One now is for four hundred acres. So it's kind of something to think about. The army has had access to thousands of acres. So what does it mean that now they only want four hundred? What do they plan? Few years ago, we had the fight against a radar. So as we all know, the military controls the narrative. So if it's a give-and-take situation, now this isn't written in stone. This is just from being an old woman who's observed all the things that's been going on on all of these military bases. You know, we've got, you know, very strong military supporters and very strong people that want the land back, should be given back after it's cleaned up. But anyway, so for KTA One, they're looking at only four hundred acres. So are they going to revisit the building of a radar? So, so keep in mind, nothing is set in stone.
Okay, Lynell, I have to ask you to wrap it up. Thank you.
So Pohakuloa, Makua, they say all these nice things, good things that we wanna hear. But what actually happened still needs to unfold. Same thing with Kahuku. So on June 27th, the Kalahui will be providing a bus service for those of you, the kupunas, the children, if they want to go and say what they want to say to the BLNR.
Thank you, Lynell. Really appreciate that. You need, get talk to Lynell. Moving on, we're going to, yes, ma'am. Just one last comment, because we do need to move on. I got other things on the agenda. So please come up here. Thank you, ma'am.
Aloha. My name is Kyli Noy. Does it need to be higher?
Yeah. There you go.
Sorry, I really hate speaking in public. Aloha. My name is Kyli Noy Ikalani, born and raised here in Waialua, right in Kukea Circle for twenty-two years. And what brought me here today, it's only my second neighborhood board meeting I've been to, is I have huge concerns for the proposed gondola on Mount Ka'ala. Board Member Raquel, I'm sorry if I pronounce your name wrong, Achu. I see your post on Instagram. I follow you. I'd love to connect if possible. But basically, I don't know what to say. I'm just bringing up that I am a community member that is highly concerned. And I hope that our board members are also in agreement and do not agree with the gondola. Because I feel like I've spoken to a lot of my own community members who highly oppose this. But we were not aware of this happening. So in all, just, I don't know if I can ask questions.
Yeah, unfortunately, under residents' concerns, just-
Okay.
Say your piece. And then, as I said, there's gonna be that meeting next Tuesday night at the high school. And that will be a great opportunity for you. Thank you so much.
Yes, but I just, please connect with me, or you have a lot of youth here, a lot of keiki here that wanna get involved. I mean, I see some of us out here. We wanna help and get involved with this. So mahalo for all you do.
Thank you, Noy. Here, I actually live right down the street from you.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. Awesome. We need more young people. Okay, okay, we're gonna move on. And first up, we have Dr. K. Aloha Fox from Mayor Blangiardi's office. Thank you.
Aloha and ho'omai ka'i. So it's a good night to see some results. So congratulations all. I'm K. Aloha Fox with the Mayor's Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. I'm just a few highlights tonight from Mayor's newsletter. Of events that are starting all throughout the summer. The Department of Parks and Recreation are starting summer fun, lots of classes and workshops for all generations, all ages to be able to get involved. So please do check out the Department of Parks and Recs. And Mayor's May Newsletter can be found online at honolulu.gov. And then I just have one departmental issue for follow-up, and this was for our Department of Design and Construction. So this is an update from April. The question from our board was if there could be a request for new streetlights to be placed at the corner of Waialua Beach Road and Goodell Avenue. Yeah, and so the, the update is that the work order from DDC was updated by the Department of Facilities and Maintenance to complete the work. This actually required a longer timeframe, because there needed to be a new installation of wood poles and part of that was included in some shop repairs. They needed new materials to be able to perform the work. And so I'm happy to share that on March 20th, the DDC DAFT did perform the night check, and they confirmed that the new streetlights are operational. And if you have any questions, DDC is able to follow up on them.
And I can confirm, since I used that corner. Okay, starting at this end, any questions for Dr. Fox? Okay, Bob.
So when you add a, a new item to the public facilities map, of course, the city council does it. But what's the lead time on something like that? Do you add it now? There, there was one, what, week ago? Kathleen said, oh, it was a mistake, about a new facility in Haleeva. And I'm wondering, what is, what is your lead time for that designation? A year, five years? How's that work?
I'll be sure to follow up. I think it might depend on the type of facility update within the map. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Community, any questions for Dr. Fox? You got off, oh, the climate change, did you?
Yes, yes. On Monday, June 9th, we're having a Climate Action Community Workshop, actually, right here. So we hope that you'll join us from six-thirty to eight-thirty. It's open to the community. We'd absolutely love to see keiki and OPO and folks of all ages be able to weigh in. This is the city's 2025 to 2030 Climate Action Plan. We're covering a number of areas, including food, waste, sustainable communities, energy and transportation. We have flyers over here. And then also through the end of the week, we have the EKI art contest. So also open to all ages, not just keiki and schoolchildren, but we also have flyers over here. Thank you so much, Cheryl.
And I've heard really, really great things about the climate change workshop. I came in on the one in Waialua at the neighborhood board, and everyone was big smiles. It looked like you had a lot of people there. So thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Kelly from Councilmember Weyer's office. Thank you, Kelly.
Aloha, Chair, and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Weyer's office. I distributed the newsletters. So just a couple of things. Councilmember wanted to thank the community for coming out to the mayor's town hall and for sharing your concerns. See, also, Department of Design and Construction, Councilmember wanted to thank the department for providing the, I guess, the rehab of streets, Unit 93 in Haleeva Town. The meeting was to discuss or to take concerns and public feedback regarding the night work that they're looking to, I guess, get started on. There is a thirty-day public notice comment period, and it's open till June 16th. Councilmember also wanted to acknowledge the largest, celebrating the largest one-time vehicle deployment for the EMS blessings. Seventeen new emergency response vehicles. This included fourteen replacement ambulances, two poor or crisis outreach response and engagement units, and a specialized community medicine ambibus. The vehicles are, should be deployed already. They're being, or otherwise gonna be deployed this month across Oahu. And then lastly, DPR, the Parks and Recreation Department, is working to expand the dog-friendly parks across Oahu. I believe they sent out public, or rather, notification to all the neighborhood boards across the island. So please stay tuned for public input. Let's see, and then a couple legislative updates. Bill 18, which would help to reduce plastic waste by restricting the sale of single-use plastics and vending machines located at city facilities, passed third reading and was signed into law by Mayor Blangiardi on May 2nd. This exempts the participation of blind vendors, though. Bill 15, let's see. Which would provide financial relief for families to comply with the state's Cecil Conversion Regulations, passed third reading as well, and is currently with the mayor for signature. Bill 36, which would allow mayor access to reserve, the Reserve Fiscal Stability Fund during economic downturns and emergencies, passed second reading last, or earlier this month. Bill 29, which would extend the real property tax exemption period for qualifying affordable rental units. This would incentivize affordable housing provided by long-term relief to property tax, or property, excuse me. This bill passed third reading as well, and it is currently with the mayor for his signature. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Charlene?
Hi, thanks. I've got a question about the night work thing. I went to an HMR meeting, and I, they said something about the seabirds, the seabird season, right? And I was told that, because you were talking about starting it shortly this summer, right? And I think the seabird season is like over in September or something? I don't, that's-
I'm not sure, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, you know, if it's seabird season, and because the lights will be on, you know, it's not about the people, it's also about the birds. If that's the season, then they'll, you know, they'll follow the light. I'm just wondering if we could get that straight, because I thought they-
Well, let me first of all clarify, when you were talking about night work, were you talking about Haleeva?
Yes, the Haleeva.
Okay, it was for noise variance.
Variance, yeah, it's a noise variant.
Yeah, they're gonna, no, they're gonna pave at night, but it was also regarding the noise variance.
Yeah, it's only for the noise.
But it's in Haleeva?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that, yeah.
Okay. That's next month's meeting. La di kea. Okay, Bob, go ahead.
So I see in your nice newsletter that you're planning on exploring the opportunities for more dog parks. Do you have a timeframe on that?
No.
Could be next twenty years?
No, Bob.
I'm being half facetious, but I ask for a real reason.
That I don't know.
Good answer, I don't know.
Okay, I would need to look into. This is a great segue, and I will let Committee, Parks Committee Chair Antalini answer that question.
Aloha, Bob. Kathleen passed it to me, because Parks Committee will be meeting in June. And I'm also gonna be asking for input now on DPR's question about which of the North Shore parks would we support or would people support for on-leash or dog-related activities? So I'm not answering the timeframe, but right now, we do have a request-
Correct.
From DPR to- from DPR to the community to suggest where might be dog-friendly locations. So Parks Committee is gonna deal with that, we're gonna meet in June, report back. But any, I haven't decided yet, because I need to contact you, but I already sent you an email on that. But anyway, if you have any suggestions, come see me, and you can just write an anonymous note on here, like, you know, no dogs ever, or dogs in which park, or whatever. But Parks Committee will deal with that.
Yeah, and Cheryl, I did share with Denise your email, so thank you very much. And Bob, my understanding is they wanted this input by the end of June, I believe, is what they were looking for. So this issue will be on our June agenda. Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything else? Any community, any questions for Councilmember?
Actually, oh, yeah, I was gonna ask you, could you clarify? So you want to know what the definition of commercial vehicle in comparison with regular vehicles, is that?
Yeah, it used to be a weight thing.
Okay.
Now, you know, the weight of the truck never changed, but now it's a commercial truck.
Okay.
Doesn't make sense, but I want to know where I can find that information.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Kelly, it's great to see. Yes, Karen, you need to come up, please. Karen, you need to come up, I'm sorry. Who? It depends. It depends where. State. Okay. Thank you, thanks, Kelly, great to see you. Next, Senator Brenton Awah.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members. To start, I don't think I'm gonna have the answer for your question tonight. But to start with the other two concerns that came up, one was for Chuns, coming out of Chuns, the transition between the pavement and the dirt. I texted Ed Sniffin, he'll send the crew out and get back to us about what they'll do. But they said they'll fill it in if they need to. I forget who asked. Okay, so we'll fill you guys in on that. To the Ka'ala development, you know, every time we talk about this, I'm glad we can put the politics aside, and we're on the same page with stopping development. We did get this past legislative session, we're done with that, we're moved on. But because this is the first board meeting after it, that was one of the highlights. We didn't pass it this year, but it got further than ever before when it comes to stopping foreigners from buying lands. It was a foreign ag land bill, we were able to pass it through the Senate. The House didn't allow it to get through the rest of the process, but we were able to move that one. I don't want to go on the list, you guys can ask if there was anything that you want to talk about there. But moving on from that, one highlight from this past session that wasn't legislative, we were able to get, the DLNR has been very giving to us and our communities' needs. We got a 65-year lease out in Ha'ula for them to build a resiliency hub on. They had been on a short-term lease, five years, it was running out. And we went in looking for like a 10, but they gave us 65. I won't get into all the reasons, but it does seem like a good time to work with the BLNR. Going forward, how much time do I have on these? It's been a while. Okay, going forward, and sorry, I was up at this morning between 2:00 and 4:00 trying to make calls, because we're going to Washington DC end of next week, trying to make contacts with a bunch, we have a bunch of meetings set up to the point of Makua and Kahuku's lands, a land return. We do, we're set up with the Department of Interior and the Department of Defense to discuss that. We don't want, just want it back, but you know, like you mentioned, and everybody talks about at these meetings, we want it restored, so we'll ask if there can be positions even where local people, actually Hawaiians can be involved with restoration. There's a bunch of things, the Dawans are back here, we'll meet with the Department of Commerce, the president, and I don't want to get all political again, I know it's a very heated time. But he did put out a message for potential tariffs on the movie industry overseas to try to bring that back. So we're gonna have a discussion with Department of Commerce about that. We have a bunch of departments, we're gonna meet congressmen and women as well. It's a little bit about what we're doing. Aside from all of that, we still have our two projects going well with the Food Trees in Haleiwa and Kahalouu. In Kahalouu, we have two more projects. I believe the last time that we were here, we had the cesspool presentation. We're gonna roll out a preemptive to the cesspool. We want to get the Genki Ball Solutions EM, basically, into cesspools to try to naturally restore the environment, since there's no solution on how to transition out of them, because people can't, 90% of people can't pay. So we're gonna look at a pilot program on Kahalouu, and we're also involving the schools, four schools will be involved out there. We do want to get involved out here too, so we're open to that. But those are just a little bit of things we're working on, open to questions now.
Thank you, thank you very much. Brett Blake.
Hello. Well, thank you for that information. I'm particularly excited about your exploration of putting the Genki Balls in the cesspool. Please keep us informed. I was also curious, you know how sometimes when there's a specific issue that comes up, and it seems like a super bummer, but then there's upsides that come from it? And so I'm just curious if you have had any thoughts, or if you'd be interested in utilizing the resources of your office to explore the oddity that is the live-fire training field? I think the ridiculous and outrageous proposal for the gondola has increased our community concern about Mount Ka'ala, but right across the hillside, there's live-fire training. And so I'm just curious if maybe your office could provide us some background as to how that live-fire area was established, and why, out of all the places in the United States, it seems to be such an unusual proximity to residences and major thoroughfares, as well as drinking water? Thank you.
Thanks, Blake.
Okay, noted, thanks, Blake.
Any other questions for Senator? Thank you, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it. Representative Perusso sends her regrets, she's traveling, she's on the mainland. Not, unfortunately, I did not hear from Representative Quinn Lin, but I'm sure he's busy. And so moving on to Board Business, oh, oh, Yvonne! I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I apologize, I take that back. She is representative, thanks, Yvonne.
Mahalo, Chair. Sorry, everyone, for my tardiness. Aloha, community, my name's Yvonne Yoro, reporting on behalf of Representative Perusso. I'll be really brief, because what I want to share is in our newsletter, which you can pick up here, or I have a few copies in the back if you want. But following up with Senator Awah, like, we had a really great session this year, and a lot of great things to really be happy about. We passed SB 1300, so feeding public school students. It's a great start, and we'll really continue to push more for that in the following years. SHB 969, restricting landfills over major aquifers, that was a huge win. So I just want to highlight that. We'll go into, we go into more detail in our newsletter, but I also wanted to share that in the interim, we've already begun doing community forums and really speaking to the community about what the federal administration and their decisions are going to be, what that really means for us in our community. So we had our first on May 12th in Milani High School, where we hosted President Wendy Hensel from the University of Hawaii, David Day from the Attorney General's Office, and then, and also Will White, Executive Director from Hawaii Appleseed. In that conversation, we really dove into public education and what they're doing in the public education system to protect our students, to protect our workers, and really what's going to be happening in the coming months. We detail in our newsletter, but I wanted to inform you that we're gonna be having one in Wahihua and Waillua in July and August, so stay tuned and reach out to our, see if you have any questions.
Thank you. First of all, we all owe this young lady a nice round of applause. She is now on the Wahihua Neighborhood Board.
Yes, that too. Thank you.
Congratulations. And not to jinx us, but the governor still has to sign the landfill bill, so thank you to Representative. Thank you, Senator, for voting on that as well. So it's not over, the battle's not over yet, and I'm not getting optimistic until it goes through and becomes law, but thank you for that. Any questions for Yvonne to take back to Representative? Yes, Bob?
I have a compliment for you. For several meetings, I've had a really hard time hearing you, which isn't necessarily your fault, but you're speaking slower and a lot closer to the mic, and I probably heard 90% of what you said tonight, so congratulations.
Just turn up your hearing aids. Okay, thank you, Yvonne, and please thank the Representative, I hope she's having a well-deserved vacation. I know it was a long session for everybody. Okay, moving on to the meat of our meeting tonight. First up, unfortunately, Board Member Cassin Fisher was taken ill and is not here tonight. So every year, though, we do a disaster prep fair, and this year it will be on October 11th, but I do need board approval to co-host it, to be one of the sponsors. Can I get a motion, Denise? Do I, do I have a second? Bob, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Now, one of our highlights tonight, and I have to share this, this is gonna like blow you guys away. I've been cleaning, because I'm remodeling the house, and we all know what that means. So I've been going through a bunch of old stuff, and I found this old issue of the North Shore News from 1993. And it still looks great, I mean, Ron used really good paper. And in here on page 11, and I'm so sorry Rex is in here tonight, because I wanted to give this to her. "It's the North Shore Outdoor Circle Working to Make the Ke'ala Pupukea Bike Way a Beautiful Edition for our North Shore," by C.C. Matthews and Gidget Dermaine. And I just thought this was so cool, given the fact that tonight we have, from the city, DTS, and here we are 32 years later. So I'm gonna hold this, but Denise, if you talk to Rex or Bob, just let her know I have a little present for her. I think she'd really, I hope she'd really appreciate that, so. Good, I just got such a kick out of this when I saw that. So I'd like to bring up now our friends from DTS, Kelly and Orin, and their consultant and Sean there, and to talk us through what they're planning on doing. Thank you.
Good evening, Community Chair and Board, Orin Nakamura with the Department of Transportation Services. I'm here this evening with Lindsay Nakashima from Bowers and Kubota. So as Kathleen had mentioned, we're gonna be discussing a little bit about the Ke'ala Pupukea bike path. So it's been about 32 years, and as you can see, it has some, you know, it's been through some growing pains, and it needs a little bit of tender loving care. So we went out with members of the community, we also met with some of the other boards, the North Shore Community Association, we also met with, so am I missing, the North Shore Outdoor Circle? And we're just kind of briefing you about what's going on, so I'll have Lindsay take over from now.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Nakashima, I'm with Bowers and Kubota. I'm a civil engineer, so like, like they said earlier, we went out with DTS, and we took some pictures, so that's in your handout there. And what we're gonna be looking at is how do we improve it? Because we did have to look at, what was really important, actually, was the trees. So we had an arborist, we went out there, we took pictures of the trees, and we evaluated over 380, 90 about trees to see if the health of them was okay, whether or not they were too close to the path, if they were invasive or not. So we had to go through all of that, we went to the Department of Urban Forestry as well. We asked them for concurrence on the trees, and then we will be evaluating the whole path again to see where we can widen, where we need to improve the pavement section, where we need to improve the striping and the signage, and if there's any drainage issues or places where we could like do improvements, and even in the railings that are near the bike path, we'll be taking a look at what we can do next. After that, we'll be doing a cost estimate to see how much this would take to rebuild the path. And then we'll put it in phases and work with the DTS to figure out how we can fund it. So it will be in phases, we'll look at the worst places first, so that we can fix that as fast as we can. And then the other ones will come as they get the funds for that. Anything else?
So we'll open it up to questions, Bob, we'll start with Mike, Bob and Erica. Sorry, I thought you had
I just had a question about if there was, maybe it's too early to know this, if there's any parking impacts, like loss of parking spaces anticipated, and if so, if there's ways to offset that. I see there's like some concern for trees, moving them and replacing the trees, but we have so little parking up here, and it seems like they're always adding new parking signs, new no parking signs all the time, and a spot where you'd parked for years, all of a sudden being spotted, and it's just getting less and less, but there's getting more people. So I really support all the bike path stuff, but I just am concerned a little bit about loss of parking spots. Is that being considered, can it be considered?
Right now, we have not seen any loss of parking. We do want to protect the bikers, so we may need to install bollards or something to protect them from vehicle traffic or whatnot, but otherwise, not yet, yeah. There's no plans for it.
You're in the design phase and are researching, et cetera?
And so you said it's been in, say, it's been going for 30 years and serving the community well?
And when you're done with your new design, what percent do you think will change? Think 30%? You might say 100% if they resurface it, but in terms of the lay of the land, what percent change do you think we might see?
Well, in terms of alignment, it won't change. The bike path is gonna stay where it is.
I understand the means of bounds.
Yeah.
Talking about is the layout.
The layout won't change a substantial amount. We'll widen where we can, and we will remove trees that are impacting the pavement section. And we'll try to mitigate that with some root barriers, so that we don't have that issue keep occurring, right? Because we don't want the departments, or Department of Facility Maintenance to keep coming out there and resurfacing or trying to fix, yeah.
So I look at these pictures, and like the vegetation and trees is really impacting, yeah, like, who planted those, and like, do you guys have a guideline?
Who planted them? Sometimes it's, yeah, it's the homeowners, sometimes it's just, it flies in from, from the, I guess, the wind, the birds, you know, it can be a number of things, so.
Oh, so this wasn't like, these aren't city trees?
Not necessarily, not all of them were planted.
So when you remove them, are they gonna be replaced with something else?
We will try to replace where we can, but we'll kind of put it in areas where we think has the availability for this tree to grow and not impact the path as well. But we do realize that we are taking away some trees, so we'll try to replace what we can, and we'll work with Outdoor Circle on trying to figure out best trees to put in certain places.
Oh, okay. I talked that if this was the city's trees, why did you plant those if it was gonna ruin?
No.
But it wasn't you, okay, never mind, thank you.
Yeah.
I think this is a really exciting initiative, really appreciate everything that you're doing, the community's been doing, and I want to commend the high-quality nature of the photographs and the captions and stuff like that. It's really helpful, as we have these kind of community discussions, to have accurate representations of the area, so that everyone's on the same page. This is just more of a curiosity, there's been a lot of discussion in Oahu, on Oahu, about speed humps on roadways for vehicles as attempts to control speed. And I know there's been an ongoing dialogue about whatever they're called, e-bikes or e-scooters, or all kinds of things, about trying to understand how to slow people down on those types of vehicles that ostensibly I don't believe are supposed to be on these kind of bike paths. But I was just curious, has anyone ever talked about speed humps on bike paths? And what other mechanisms do we have to prevent people from traveling at excessive speed and threatening public health and safety on these types of awesome resources? Thank you.
Good evening, Kelly Akasaki, Transportation Engineering Division Chief. So I'll talk about that. We don't like to put speed humps so much on bike paths, but we are aware of the speeding. Not only are the e-bikes a problem on the paths, we have golf carts that use the path. What we're gonna try and do is where it connects to the roadways, if we can put up bollards just to prevent them from getting access to the path. There are parts of the path that connect to the roadway, and then those are the ones where we, maybe we'll put more trees there to kind of put a buffer, so it's not easy accessible for the golf carts and cars to come on. There's some areas on Kam Highway where the cars like actually drive from Kam Highway through the bike path to Ke'akea or wherever they're going. So those are the areas that if we are removing trees, we want to put up more buffers there. So whatever we take away, we're gonna put it back and hopefully make the path a little better. But as for speed humps, not so much. Maybe bollards to kind of slow them down at some pinch points, but that would be it.
So in this type of situation, is there a top speed guideline or limit for this type of bike path?
So in every, in our rule for our traffic code, you're not supposed to go over 10 miles per hour on a bike path. And the hard part is because you And the hard part is because your bike path, especially Keala Pupukea, is so busy, so many students and so many visitors in that area, it's very heavily used. So we don't want them to go fast and zoom into. But with these e-bikes, I mean, we have a hard time on the streets, let alone on the path. So the e-bikes kind of make it a little complicated.
I talked to a lady who was all in a dither about a week ago. She said, oh, if you look to the beach, it's going away, it's gonna undermine the bike path, yada, yada, yada. And I think that's area Sunset Beach. So my question is, if it is inevitable that the ocean will undermine it, how are you building that into your plan?
That portion, unfortunately, until they widen the roadway and we can move further inland, it'll only be limited to whatever space we have. We're trying to look at improving the rest of it, what's inland and is not affected by the wear and tear of the sea rise and the waves that are getting it. So there might be a small portion that we can't get the full width, especially that sunset area where it already fell in. So I think about a good 100 feet already has fallen in on both sides over the last 10 years. So that's the part that we're kind of tight space. But we'll try and do whatever we can.
Community, any questions in the community for these guys? Yeah, Karen, please.
Hi, sorry, I use that a lot. And I also, you know, anyway, it was built right when my daughter was a baby, and we got to use it all the time, and it was really cool. But anyway, my concern is that bollards, however you say it, bollards? When they put them up, the city and the state, they seem to be just these real big, giant ugly things. And I'm just hoping that, I mean, I like them for safety, definitely. But I'm hoping that maybe we can get creative and make something that's not ugly and something that's nice. That's my request.
We'll keep that in mind, yes. The hard part about bollards is what do we use? Do we use the metal ones? Do we use the rubber ones that you can kind of hit? We just want to make sure that, especially at night, when there's all that tree cover, it's kind of hard to see them. We don't want someone to hit them and get hurt.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. And thanks, great questions, everybody. Thank you for keeping us updated. Really appreciate it. Jim, where are you? Jim Hayes? Probably sitting in his car somewhere. I don't know what to do. He's not here. There he is, okay. Didn't realize you were that boring.
We were just talking outside there.
Thanks, Jim. We really appreciate it. Thanks, Amy.
My pleasure. So my name is Jim Hayes with Planning Solutions, and I'm here to talk about Libby, single-family residences. And with me is the applicant, John Libby. And we'll do a short presentation, and then we can ask or answer any questions, hopefully. But I had a handout. Hopefully those who are interested, if you're here for this project, you got a handout. It's just a couple pages. The first page shows the location of the project. It's on Crozier Drive. And if people probably are familiar with that area, it's right next to the access, the beach access to Silver Channels Beach area. So that's where we're talking about. And the applicant, the Libby family, is seeking a special management area permit, a major SMA, for two dwellings on parcels. So there are two neighboring parcels with two dwellings on each one, which is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Most of those parcels have two dwellings on them. And one of the subject parcels currently has two dwellings on it already. And what we've done so far, prepare a draft environmental assessment, which is where these figures and tables come from, and that's available for public review currently. On the second page of the handout, we have a drawing that illustrates the proposed development. The two parcels are outlined in a gold line, and then the development is shown in blue and green. And it illustrates on the shoreline side of the parcels, it illustrates the shoreline setback and the shoreline erosion hazard zones. And you'll see that all the proposed development is behind MAUCA of those hazard areas. So the proposed development complies with the shoreline setback ordinance and the policies in place at Department of Planning and Permitting concerning shoreline hazards. The third page of the handout is a table that briefly summarizes our assessment of the environmental effects of this project. And it runs through 10 subject matters. And those are the subjects that are required to be assessed for any special management area permit project. They run from recreational resources, historic and cultural resources, scenic resources, coastal ecosystems, and other matters that are relevant to the coastal development. And as you'll see from this table, our assessment is that the project is consistent and was consistent with the policies and will not result in a significant adverse effect on the environment. And the last page of our handout is a table and then a QR code. The table summarizes the proposed development's compliance with the land use ordinance. Land use ordinance applies to all properties on the island, whether you're on the shoreline or not. But any project has to comply with the land use ordinance. And this table on the last page summarizes how the project is in compliance. And because it is a relatively large lot, and there are only two dwellings proposed, it's very easily in compliance. The site is zoned R. 0.5. And will have substantial setbacks. The setback from the shoreline is at least 78 feet, and the setbacks from the front yard are at least 10 feet. Also compliant with the height restrictions. The maximum height is 25 feet. And then there are other aspects of the land use ordinance that were designed to eliminate monster houses. And that's like the number of bathrooms per dwelling and things like that. And again, the proposed development easily complies with those aspects of the land use ordinance as well. And then the QR code, you can take a picture of that, and that will lead you to the draft environmental assessment for the project, which you'll, it's a state of Hawaii website that this will take you to on the environmental review, ERP, environmental, anyway, ERP is the state agency that manages environmental documents. But that's the end of my presentation, and we're here to address people's questions if they have any.
I'm gonna take prerogative and ask a couple quick questions for you. First of all, Mr. Libby, thank you so much for coming. We so seldom see the homeowners, and we're so grateful that you took the time out of your busy day. It's really important. We thank you for that. Second of all, you say, what is grasscrete?
Grasscrete is a, an alternative to concrete, basically. So grasscrete is a hardened, semi-hardened surface for driveways and parking areas and things of that matter that allow for stormwater percolate into the ground rather than a hardscape surface.
Semi-permeable?
Yeah, mostly permeable.
Okay, great. Excellent. And then what are you gonna do about waste management?
There are individual wastewater treatment systems, individual wastewater systems that will be permitted by Department of Health.
Great, thank you very much.
One per parcel.
Okay, we had Charlene, and I saw Erica. Yes, go ahead, Charlene.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for being here. I think you asked my questions, like how many septic systems for this, right? Because they care about kitchens and not so much bathrooms for some reason, when it comes to septics, right?
It's, the septics are usually designed by the number of bedrooms.
Right, five bedrooms per septic, but one kitchen. So specific. But anyway, I just had a question about the park. So it looks like the parking behind the house is, the lots are across Crozier Drive. So is that, do they own that?
That's public parking.
That's public parking?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the project site, Parcel 3, the one that's on the west, there's a garage with a residence above the garage on the MAUCA side of the property. And then on Parcel 4, there's a combination basketball court and parking area on the MAUCA side of the property.
Aloha, thank you so much for coming. So this is my hood. I do appreciate that you came. One thing that we see a lot of, that I'm hoping you won't do, is cheating this system on vacation rentals by doing 30 days, but not making them stay the whole time. But yeah, just if, hopefully you plan to live there, and if you aren't there, you have long-termish tenants and things like that, just as a concerned neighbor. So it's just, just putting that out there. Thank you so much.
I looked at, I looked at your property online, and did you design it, sir?
The architect is Peter Vincent Architects.
It's really beautifully done, yeah. It's really nice, and I read all the ins and outs, and thank you. Any other questions? Mike Beekler, Denise, Bob, and Raquel.
I just, one question, if, I guess, is there any anticipated effect on beach access, just being that it's next, but I expect that there's not, but let me know if there is, if you had any. And then I was wondering if there's like a, it's like a joint development? It's like two parcels, looks like they were like purchased separately at different times, like they're maybe not being used jointly now? Is it a joint development issue? And then are they intended to be like kind of operated as one thing? Or is it like a, gonna be CPR'd and sold off individually or something?
I can address part of that, and then John can come up and speak to some other aspects. When you develop two properties that are adjoining like this, there's an option to do what they call a joint development agreement, where a joint development agreement allows a structure to cross the property line. But in this case, none of the structures are proposed to cross the property lines. And that's intentional because they want to maintain the ability to sell it as separate lots in the future, should that be desired. But my understanding currently is that it'll be functioning as for the family. And then concerning the access, Parcel 3 has an easement, an access easement, 10 feet wide on the west side of it. And no, no development is proposed in that easement area. And we're, we're very aware that it's a sensitive topic, and people are gonna need to have access via that easement throughout both the construction period and then while people are living there. So yeah, that, that will be sustained.
Mr. Libby, you, you've actually owned the property for quite a long time, haven't you? Come up to the microphone, sir. Thank you.
Let me first address your question. I don't know if everyone can hear me. The intention of the property and the development is for family resident for me and for my kids and for, I have lots of now, I have lots of friends and family. So there's no intention to rent any of it, even on a short-term basis. There may be situations where I have a caretaker, and there's living quarters above a garage for that. But that's my intention. Not a real estate developer. I don't have extensive property ownership here on the island, and I've never rented to anybody. And I don't know if we answered your questions fully. It may be, maybe a technical issue that I'm not really familiar with, but, okay. And sorry, there's another. I think the empty lot I owned for about five years now. And the other one is about two and a half or so. But my recollection, the exact dates are not, you know, firm.
No, that's okay. That's fine, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, I think Denise, and then Bob, and then Raquel. Me.
You already answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you for, Mr. Libby, for answering that question. I was gonna follow up on Erica's question about short-term rentals. So I read in the environmental assessment, no intention to do that, but we hear that all the time. And there's no, right? So I just want to follow up on, you said you intend to live there in your family, but it's also possible due to whatever circumstances, you may end up having to sell the property. And so are you, would you be willing to put into the deed, you know, no short-term rentals or some way that it's more than just a promise, which we've heard a million times? And it's no offense to you, but it's like, it could be somebody else who owns the property or, who knows? So how can we be assured it's basically four houses? And the economic model is short-term rentals, right?
Understood. And the way that this is addressed by the city, or one of the ways it's addressed by the city, other than enforcement actions, is that it is actually a condition of the SMA permit that short-term rentals are not allowed. So beyond the normal protections for any neighborhood, the SMA permit conditions add an additional layer. And the SMA permit runs with the property. So anyone that purchases a property will be held to the same conditions.
Just a footnote on that, that depends on city enforcement. But I appreciate that answer. That's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Raquel?
Thank you. And yes, Mr. Libby, thank you for coming, because it's rare that the homeowner or the property owner ever shows up, and it leaves us hanging, kind of. I might be missing it, but how many bedrooms in each dwelling?
There's a brief summary on the last page, the last row of the table. There's a number of bathrooms. So there's, I don't know that we have a summary of the number. Was your question about bathrooms or bedrooms?
So I'm, are we to assume that each bathroom is for a bedroom?
I believe that's generally the case. Yeah. I think there's, like, the caretaker dwelling has one bedroom, and then the main dwelling, I think, has, because it has the master bedroom in it, I think it has three bedrooms. And then the two dwellings on Parcel 4 have two bedrooms each, I believe. But.
So what I'm getting at is because that leads to the septic and the wastewater, right? How many bathrooms? And how many bathrooms because of how many bedrooms? But could the pool house also have a bedroom in it?
No.
You know what I'm saying? Is sometimes they come in and they say one, and then we get there, and it's, there's 10 bedrooms and 16 bathrooms.
Oh, yeah.
That's happened.
I know, that's happened. It just, it won't be the, won't be the case in this situation.
And then the parking basketball court area is, does that parking service both sides of the property?
No. Well, it could, but from a permitting standpoint, because there's no joint development agreement, the, each parcel is required to have sufficient parking for the development on that parcel.
Okay. And then I'm just going, I just need to ensure that you are also going to provide a cultural of some sort when construction occurs. We have had an uptake in the EV appearing on our coastlines, and I'm certain that there's something nearby, or if not on property. So I want to ensure that that is handled appropriately and goes to protocol.
Yes. We're very sensitive to that, and already working with the State Historic Preservation Division. And they have approved our archaeological inventory survey plan, which was, it is an appendix to the draft EA. And then State Historic Preservation recently approved it, and that plan has been implemented. And they're now preparing a report regarding the refindings. There were no findings of EV on the site. But provided the report is available in time, it will be appended to the final environmental assessment that should come out. it will be appended to the final environmental assessment that should come out in July or probably more August timeframe.
Did you guys start digging already?
Just for the AIS.
Okay.
There will be no construction prior to final approval from State Historic Preservation.
Who's your cultural, who's your archaeologist?
ASM affiliates.
Okay, thank you. Leaf had a question and then Blake.
Back to the bathroom. It's kind of a red flag. Looks like about every 15 feet, there's a bathroom. I, you know, kind of opens it up to hotel. But, oh, well, I'm not a girl, so I don't know nothing about powder rooms. The, you have a ocean access 12 feet wide. Are they gonna be able to park on Crozier Drive and walk down the road? Or is that private parking on the Malka side of Crozier?
On the figure, on the Malka side of Crozier Drive is public parking. I just put the label there saying parking, just so people are, I should have put public parking. But we're, we're aware of the fact that the public parks there and that that will have to be maintained so that all construction activity related to this project will occur on the subject parcels and not prevent the public from parking in those areas.
It's all staging on site?
Yes.
Okay. Blake? Okay, thanks. Blake?
I thank you for this presentation. I really apologize if I'm missing it and, or if it was spoken about and I didn't quite grasp it. On this diagram, where are the wastewater? I don't know if it's an individual systems or what kind of systems are being planned. And, and then as a follow-up to that, I'm just trying to understand the, and I don't not be, I may not be phrasing it correctly, but what's the, what depth is the water table? Like if you were to dig on this property, how far down would you dig before you hit water?
Okay, I will try to, first, IWS. The IWS is a component of the project that is permitted by Department of Health, not the city and county of Honolulu. So it's typically.
What is IWS?
Individual wastewater system. Yeah. So the IWS is permitted by DOH. So it's typically not specifically addressed in an SMA application other than to state clearly that we do understand that we need to have a permit from Department of Health. And Department of Health process is rigorous and requires that an engineer design the system to the appropriate size to the proposed development, cite the system away from the shoreline in a manner that protects water quality. So this project will obtain the necessary permits and comply with the conditions of those permits.
I think you heard several community members commend the landowner for showing up and for the thoroughness of aspects of this. And I just find that particular answer a little jarring in terms of like, it seems like you could disclose where you're thinking of citing it, even if it's not a requirement of this specific presentation or this specific permit that you're applying for. And so that's, seems like an oddity to me. It seems like it'd be very easy for you in agreement with the landowner just to let us know what those plans are and where it would be placed. And then I guess I'm still specifically interested even more so now from the frontage on the roadway to the ocean, if you're aware of the depth at which the water take. Like how far down would you have to dig? And in parallel to that, how deep is your, your system gonna be?
Okay. Well, we can add, add information to the final environmental assessment as far as IWS. So that's something we can do. I will, I will endeavor to add that to the final environmental assessment. And it would therefore also appear in the special management area application. As far as depth to groundwater, groundwater is typically one foot above mean high tide. So depending on the elevation, I think, I can't remember the elevation of the site precisely, but it's probably around six feet. Yeah, 10 feet or something. Just somewhere between 10 and 6 feet. So groundwater will be at an elevation of plus one roughly. Or nine feet, seven feet underground.
I think it's a lot closer in that neighborhood, but there is some caprock there, which does seal in the water. So not a lot of caprock, but there is some caprock there. Okay, well, thank you for, thank you, Blake. Thank you for including that because it is very important to us. I'm gonna go out to the community. Any questions in the community first? Okay, Raquel. Oh, Lanell, you do need to come front. I'm sorry, sweetie. Raquel?
Sorry, I just, looking at my notes, I forgot to ask. Bouncing off of Blake's inquiry about the depth of digging, I'd also like to inquire your digging for this pool. And if there's any impacts to the underneath for that, how deep is that gonna be?
This is discussed in section 3.2 of environmental assessment, I believe. And let me see if I can find it real quick. Gotta put on my glasses. Yeah, section 3.2 of the EA addresses archaeological, historical resources. And in that section, section 3.23, we talk about potential impacts and those impacts are often associated with excavation. So that's why we talk about excavations in the section. And let's see. Typical footing taps, so footings of the, of the structure will be six inches broad. I don't think we have a specific depth for the pool listed here, but I can add that to information.
That would be great if you could do that. Appreciate it. Any other final questions? Okay, Mike?
I just had one last thing. I just kind of, all the water depth thing made me think. I've seen a lot of, in that area, a lot of houses getting well permits. It seems like maybe for small capacity irrigation wells, like irrigate their properties. Is there any wells on the property or any intention to get wells for, you know, even just like landscape irrigation?
There are no wells and there are no plans to get a well. That's a very complex permitting effort.
Thank you. I would just again, want to thank both of you for coming. And Mr. Libby, again, thank you so many times. The landowner doesn't show and we are your neighbors. So welcome to the neighborhood. I know you're already there, but thank you very much for coming. We do appreciate that. Jim, thank you again for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we do not have anybody here from the military. We have approval of the March 25 minutes. Do I have a motion to accept? Charlene moves. Do we have a second? Mike, do we have any discussion? Thanks, guys. Drive carefully. Be safe. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Minutes passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports. Raquel?
Thank you. Okay, so the agricultural committee was following a specific bill during the ledge session. And something we followed pretty passionately for our ag lands was the Senate Bill 1249. It passed and it became Duke's law. And for those that are not familiar, this was as a result of a fellow rancher who was shot and killed on his property. So we had a variety of different bills to address agricultural crime within our ag lands. This is the one that survived and passed and it was hugely, definitely an emotional moment for Mr. Pio, who passed away. His mom was in attendance. We attended many meetings. And with the support and collaboration with also our neighbors on the west side. And what this bill basically does is it establishes an agricultural enforcement pilot program for Oahu and Hawaii Island within the Department of Law Enforcement. It will be implemented at the discretion of the Deputy Director of Law Enforcement. And as soon as this bill passed, the Director of Law Enforcement pulled us aside and we're looking really for, looking forward to deeper conversation and implementing and pursuing these efforts. So funds were appropriated, which is a huge plus. And they'll be establishing positions as they are right now. We're just waiting for governor's signature. And we will now clarify, create and strengthen the laws regarding the crimes and violations related to agriculture or ag lands and hunting on private agricultural lands as well as trespassing and criminal penalties. So there's more to come, but it is in process and we're waiting for the governor's signature. So it was a win and that took a lot of work and I'm hugely grateful to be supported. So that's where we're at right now.
Thanks, Raquel. Okay, as I mentioned before, Board Member Caston Fisher's not well. Cesspool Committee, Senator did mention the Genki Balls. We are gonna probably do some work up here on the North Shore with that. We've had some good conversations. We did not get really any legislative stuff passed this year, right, Yvonne? Not very, nothing really worth discussing, but we will try again last, next year. We are on hiatus until about September. When we will then start working with Rep. Peruso again on some legislation for cesspools or to remove cesspools, but at a place that doesn't break us financially. That's kind of where we're trying to go to. So that is that. And Denise, did you want to add anything else?
Thank you. Back to Parks Committee. Couple of things I wanted to point out in the letter from Parks. We have till the end of summer to give input, so it's not a huge rush, but we will meet in June and then report back to the board. But a couple of things that are interesting for us, 85% of the parks don't allow dogs. That's Oahu-wide. And how many of you know that in our area, we actually have a dog park? Like nobody knows that this exists, right? I know, even we didn't know. It's the Kamana Nui Neighborhood Dog Park. It's in Wailua and it's super hidden. You have to find it. It's teeny. I don't know the history of it. But like, nobody knows about it. So again, if you're interested, whatever your position is, you can just come find me, leave your email and then we'll invite you to the Parks Committee meeting and you'll get an announcement anyway if you're on the neighborhood board list. But yeah, all kinds of thoughts on that are welcome. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Board member attendance at community meetings, myself, Board Member Chu, Board Member Lanau and Board Member Lyons were at that Noise Bariance meeting. And I'm sure we all showed up at other places together because we just love hanging together. But I can't remember anything. Next, correspondence, board members, as you know, I email you pretty much everything. You're inundated by emails from me regularly. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. And on that agenda, we will have Lonnie Akia. We've got some consultants coming to give us an update on that project. So please let your friends and neighbors know. Any board member announcements on anything? And you know, I was remiss, Blake, and please share this with your fellow firefighters. They did a tremendously awesome job on that fire in Haleiwa, which was extraordinarily scary if anyone saw the picture. So Blake, thank you for your service and please share that with your fellow firemen. We were really grateful. Nobody was hurt, no homes were burned and they did an awesome job. Any other announcements? I cannot believe it. We are ending 45 minutes early. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.